Planning Board Meeting of the Village of Reinbeck of October 6, 2020. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for 6384 Mill Street. We have Warren Temple Smith, Victoria Polidoro, and Christian Pajee, engineer.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to let the applicant make a presentation in a minute. We have received to date five letters of interest in the public hearing. On October 5th, we received it from Christian Ann Crouch. And on October 5th, we also received something from Melanie Rotkamp, who's the president of Duchess Tourism, who's not a resident of Reinbeck. And the other four are from someone named Anne today on Star Drive, from Debbie Duke today on Platte Avenue. I just received a letter from Jane Hoffman. Now, these letters will be included in the public record. And the Planning Board has seen them and read them. And I am happy to see that some of the people who wrote the letters have requested to speak tonight. So Ryan has the list of the people who requested to speak. And if anybody is listening, I'll make this announcement again. If anybody's listening, you can move your arrow down to the cursor. You'll see chat next to the green arrow. Click on the chat button and you can type in David Miller would like to speak. And Ryan will add you to the list. I'll announce that again as soon as we run out of speakers. So I'd like to open up to the applicant to make a presentation to the public, explaining the project.
Okay, very good. With me tonight, this is Warren Smith. With me tonight is Victoria Polidoro and Christian Pajee, engineer. And I'm going to start, if I may, by sharing screen. I've got this in both PowerPoint and PDF format, but the PDF is higher resolution. So I'll use that if I may. Sometimes the documents take another second to open, but I think it's worth it. See if I can do screen sharing here. There we go. Members of the planning board?
I can see it, but it's hard to hear you. You're breaking up a little bit.
Okay, I'll move a little closer. So this is the site plan. There are actually two plans on this sheet. The lower plan is the existing conditions in which the existing sewer easements clearly marked and so forth. And the upper plan is showing the proposed building between the relocated Chamber of Commerce booth and the building immediately to the north there on Mill Street. Christian Pajee will actually speak to the site plan, but I just wanted to show this to you and the public to orient you as to where the building is, this proposed to be. This is on the east side of Mill Street, roughly across from the M&amp;T Bank. Right now, it appears to be an empty space. And the Chamber of Commerce booth is just barely on the property. There's a driveway into the parking lot to the east of that. The lots actually connect through, but the CVS lot on the eastern end. And immediately to the south of this lot is the frontier telephone. I believe it's a switching station, and that building is set well back from the street. But anyone looking in there sees it. Many people know this site because they may drive in one entrance and out the other to turn around. But it's a bit of a missing tooth in the face of Reinbeck right on the main street there. And so I think it's a great opportunity to put in appropriate building. But I'm going to move along to architectural elements here. This is an aerial photo with some other things marked. And again, I'll let Christian Pajee speak about this when we get there. These are some site details. These are the preliminary floor plans for the building. And what this building is proposed to have is a retail space on the bulk of the ground floor. At the back of the building is a ground floor accessible guest suite that would be part of the hotel that's up above. So while the building is a very small building, it has stairs front and back for required egress, access and egress. But there is an accessible guest room at the back that's entered from the rear of the building, from a little patio behind the building. Other guests could enter at the front of the building. And I'll let Victoria, in due course, address, you know, the actual process of accessing the building if you reserve a room here. But you could go up the front or back stair with key card access and have also the key card would be activated for one of the individual rooms. And the way it's planned is there are four guest suites on each of the two upper levels. They're all king or queen rooms with individual bathrooms. And these are intended, again, as hotel rooms. I think many--
Warren, can you go full screen? Because I think it'll make the images a little bit bigger for people watching. If it's possible.
It probably is. Let me see.
Warren, just zoom in. Increase, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that cut anything off in your view?
Yeah, it does.
I don't know if I can--
All right, well--
Well, anyway. Oh, that was the other way.
Yes, that's the other way.
Okay. All right, moving along. So when I discussed the design of the building with the owners of the property, they clearly wanted something that harkened back to late 18th century, early 19th century architecture. And in fact, the building in this image, or two images, one is a photograph and the other is an early drawing. It's actually even earlier. You can see it says erected 1667. I'm not sure the building looked like that when it was erected in 1667. But this is a building, one of many Schuyler houses in Albany that was a home and then later became a retail building. And it's really sort of a Dutch vernacular building. You can see the very steep roof. Harkens back actually to early Dutch and early English traditions. But it obviously wasn't retail when it was built. But as Albany grew up around it, it became a retail building. So the ground floor has shop windows, large, very large windows on the front street, smaller windows on the side street, and of course, a little dormers up on the roof. And again, a very steep gable. And the photograph actually indicates that the original rendering, which you see at the bottom, where it shows a door and a window on the street, were pretty accurate. But this was, so it's a brick building and it's a gabled building. And it was definitely an inspiration for what seemed to be appropriate for the Hudson Valley. The next building, again, similar period. This one has a gable to the street. You can see there's a side door, large windows above it, and little windows up in the gable, showing, again, a typical late or 18th century building, which that style obviously persisted into the 19th century. And there are a couple of other examples, three other examples here of buildings roughly the same period. A couple are from New York City. One is from, I'm not sure where the one on the lower left is from, but they're variations on a theme of either eve to the street or gable to the street, brick buildings, in some cases with clavbered on the side, certainly the one in the middle top, and with a later shed dormer addition across the roof area. But again, this is very much the style. So that brings us to what we came up with after looking at several iterations, a building with a retail facade on the street. The door on the left would provide access to the retail space. The door on the right would provide access to the front stair of the hotel. And then up above, there are the hotel guest rooms. This particular version shows gable dormers. Sometimes people call them doghouse dormers on the roof. We looked at another option with shed dormers that I will show you. We felt that this was the most appropriate for the style of the building. But we're certainly happy to hear from the planning board and public about this. The next few, we're just looking from the southwest, so it's the side of the building with, again, the gable dormers. You can sort of see it in the context there of Mill Street. We did a version here with shed dormers, which I mentioned a moment ago. They're slightly less formal, if you will, more like the first image I showed you of the Schuyler house in Albany. Our feeling was this works as well, but it seems perhaps a little less in keeping with the style of the building. And I have one final image here, which shows the Chamber of Commerce booth in relation to it as it gets moved fully onto the adjacent property. And the only other images I had to show you here are just straight on elevations of the four sides of the building. But I think the renderings actually show us more here. So I'm gonna go back if I can. Do not cooperate. Usually I can just go back. Oh, here we go, sorry. So yeah, this is the building set into the context of the street with architecture that we feel was appropriate for a Hudson Valley town of the, you know, 1700s, 1800s, 1900s. Again, it fills in part of the street wall in Reinbeck. Here, we've got a double lot that's sort of missing a building, and we can only fill in the one half. The other half is going to retain the frontier building set to the back. And then, of course, we have the wood, the clavbered building, gable to the street, where Paul Helenbeck has his office, and then finally, their formed church at the corner. Small scale, makes good use of the site and fills an need. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning board has, or if they're members of the public that want to ask questions, or if you feel appropriate, Mr. Chair, we can have Christian talk about the site and Victoria address any other specifics.
Finish, have you guys finish the presentation?
Okay, is Christian on here?
I am. Hey, Warren, thanks for that.
Do you want me to go back to your plan?
Why don't we, why don't you unshare? So I can share mine, and that way I can drive and not bother you.
Very good. That's fine. Sure. Yep. Can I unshare?
Are people seeing this?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I don't know if this will allow me to zoom. Yeah, so I'm not going to do that. Okay, so my name is Christian Pajee. I'm the civil engineer for the applicant. And I'm just going to run through the existing site conditions and some of the proposed conditions as they relate to this new building that Warren just described. The, let's see. As Warren mentioned currently, so this, hopefully everybody can see my cursor. This is the subject property for the application. It's an existing parking lot. As Warren mentioned, the tourism shed is right here on the frontier property to the south. It's just slightly onto the subject property along with a park bench and a sign for the tourism shed. That's not currently shown on the plan, but we'll be adding that on future submissions. There, the shaded area is an existing easement, sewer easement with the village. So it's a village easement right of way. The, let's see. So the other shaded areas on this existing site plan just shows some of the areas that we are either adding pavement. Currently, the edge of pavement is shown in the dark border along with some curbing. This shaded area is where we're adding some pavement to just increase the size of the parking lot and create code compliant parking spaces and aisle widths. There is also, along the right of way, along Route 9, there is, here is Route 9, the curb line, and then there's actually a concrete. It's not really a sidewalk. It's just a concrete area in between the sidewalk and the road that we will be removing that concrete and restoring it to a grass buffer strip, which is similar to how it exists north and south of the property. So returning some of that to some, to green space. Okay, so I will go up to the proposed. Okay, here we are with the proposed. We're showing the revised edge of pavement along with revised parking striping. With this revised edge of pavement, we were able to gain a couple parking spaces, even with the loss of the spaces due to the building. So that was, that was helpful. The, let's see. The proposed building is shown by this hatch area right here. Behind that is a little terrace area that we're creating with concrete pavers. Those, these boxes are just some conceptual locations for planters. We're going to be adding some details to that just based on conversation with the planning board. And again, we're happy to listen to any comments from the public regard to that also. We're going to be adding some street trees along the front also in the buffer space along Route 9. The location of those trees will likely be revised also just based on comments from the board so far in our discussions at previous meeting. The building will be tying into village water and sewer. There's currently a couple manholes, sewer manholes around the site that we are going to be looking at to tie into for sewer. And that is really it. There's an existing refuse container in this location here. There's a little landscape island where the container is currently. We're proposing to just enclose that with a formal refuse enclosure and maintain that location. Other than that, that really summarizes the major changes to the site. I'll point your attention just over here to the tourism shed. Before, the tourism shed was, like I said, slightly on the other property, slightly on the subject property and further back. So this whole entire area that's within this border is currently just a grass area where the tourism shed is. So we're relocating that to be completely on the frontier property and moving it closer to the sidewalk to be more consistent with the buildings adjacent to that shed. There's also a transformer that is on the subject property that we'll be relocating behind that tourism shed also. So with that, I think that really summarizes the site changes.
Christian. Christian, can you hear me?
I can. I can.
Hey, can you show me a elevation?
Okay, elevation of?
The building, first floor.
Let's see. Front?
Um, well, again, what I'm getting at is, and I was talking to the village attorney, in the historic district overlay, section 120-39, subsection 4, it basically states that all commercial buildings in a village center needs at least 70% glass on the first floor facade. Do you know if you guys designed the facade with that in mind?
I would say the front facade certainly does.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm asking the question. I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, do you, I just wanted to make sure that you did comply with the, with one of the provisions.
Sure.
And the only reason why I bring it up, because it hadn't been mentioned.
Yeah, that's a good point. I don't think I've heard that mentioned, but I'm sure that Warren, I don't want to speak for Warren. It seems like here is the, the front elevation. So here's the first floor facade, and it looks, I'm not sure if Warren has the number handy.
I haven't checked the number, but I would say it's easily 70%.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
But that's a good point.
Warren, that's something that we can calculate and provide for the next meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So with that, unless there's questions specific to the site that the planning board has, or if they would like to open it to the public. Otherwise, if Victoria would want to just go through the operating procedure of the hotel rooms.
I just want to address a few points. This is being proposed as a lodging facility, which is a permitted use in the district. It's not an Airbnb, as some people have proposed. You know, the problem with Airbnbs is that they convert existing residential housing into hotels. This is being proposed as a hotel. It has adequate sewer, adequate water, and it's in a district which can support a hotel. We provided an operations plan to the village, which discusses the various methods of operation. Right now, the concept is that there will be someone to do check in, except perhaps in late evening hours, in which case someone could do check in remotely over a phone app, and it would unlock the door. But we've laid all that out in the narrative. So there's an option A, B, and C. We've also had conversations with Duchess County Tourism. When this was first proposed, before it even came here to this board, we had spoken with Mary Kay Verba, who was the former head of Duchess County Tourism. And she indicated that there was a need for more hotel rooms in Northern Duchess and that we were routinely losing revenue to Ulster County, where people were, you know, coming to Reinbeck for the restaurants, for the fairgrounds to walk around. Then they were going over to Ulster County and staying there. And so we were losing the nighttime restaurant business sometimes and losing those room occupancy tax dollars. And so we reached out again to Duchess County Tourism, and I provided you with a copy of the email. But the new head of Duchess County Tourism, again, indicates that even with Mirbo fully constructed and operating, we're still short of hotel rooms in Northern Duchess County. As far as the neighbors, you had asked me to provide updates on Frontier and the neighbor to the north. And since the last planning board meeting, we've had discussions with the neighbor to the north, who will be allowing us to cut down the black walnut tree that the fire department requested. And we've been in conversations with Frontier about the eight inch overhang. And, you know, we have a few tweaks to work out, but they've also indicated that they'll grant a license agreement to allow us to have the overhang. You know, unless they're going to build a building right next to it, in which case we could modify the overhang.
Well, we have a lot of questions to ask, but I would like to let the public chime in first. And Ryan has a list of a bunch of people who pre-registered. If you haven't pre-registered, if you move your cursor to the bottom of the screen, you'll see next to the green arrow is an icon that says chat. If you click on that, you can type in John Smith would like to speak. And Ryan will add you to the list and turn on your microphones one at a time. I would appreciate, I mean, as has been said already, lodging facilities are permitted in the business district. I know there are some people for hotels, some people against the hotel, but we need to confine our comments or questions to the site plan, issues of parking and traffic and other issues, because a hotel is permitted by the village code. And so we can't, you know, we can't arbitrarily say we don't want a hotel. It's the law. So Ryan, do you have the list of speakers and are they signed on?
They are signed on. The first, I have Vanessa Bertozzi, 25 Stortini Drive.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I heard what you just said about the village code does permit lodgings and hotels. But, you know, in looking back at the comprehensive plan, there is, there are statements about respecting the primary needs of residents year round. And I also, you know, I respect Victoria's comments about Northern Duchess needing more hotels. But, you know, when I talk to neighbors, they feel that we're in danger of having over tourism in the village. And so I feel like there's just a need to state that perhaps the village code needs more, another look to see how to balance the needs of the residents with the business needs and tourism being a big part of that. The other comment I wanted to make is that I'd like to hear, and I bet other people on the call from the public would like to hear more about the traffic and the turn-ins and outs and the flow of traffic through the parking lots and what the implications are, since that is a, you know, Route 9 and overseen by the DOT. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys want to comment?
I can comment on that. First of all, I'd like to just correct something that I stated before about the number of parking spaces. I indicated that we were gaining parking spaces with the layout. What I meant to say was that we are gaining spaces within this existing area. We are indeed losing six spaces due to the building. So I just wanted to go on the record to correct that. Regarding the traffic flow through the property, we are maintaining the existing accesses off of Route 9 into the frontier property and doing a one-way in through that access point, and then a one-way out through the subject property. The, you're correct about the DOT. The DOT will be involved with this. They have this in front of them and are reviewing it. And they'll be responsible for reviewing relative to site distances and all of that and anything, any other work that's involved in their right of way, including the landscaping that's going to be provided. We did do turning movement analyses. They're not shown on this plan, just to demonstrate that larger trucks for the garbage disposal and removal from the site and also emergency access vehicles could actually circulate through the site in case of an emergency. Again, I don't have them here, but they were something that was submitted to the board. And we actually visited the site. I went to the site with the village code enforcement officer and the chief of the fire department, where we, the chief actually drove a ladder truck through the southerly entrance into the property and was able to maneuver around where the proposed building is and make this turn and allow, allowing him to stage in this area in case of, in case of an emergency and then successfully pull out. So in addition to the analysis that we did just with our CAD software, we double-checked and went and did it with the ladder truck that would actually be responding to an emergency. And that was done to the satisfaction of both the code enforcement officer and the chief of the fire department.
Christian, one of the letters we received was concerned about parking. Can you explain the existing parking counts, the new parking counts, and the parking in lieu of the, that has to be done to validate this parking area?
Sure, so there are, there are currently 43 parking spaces that are striped in this parking lot. Most of these parking spaces are not code compliant as far as just dimensional, just dimensionally. So we're, all of the new proposed spaces are code compliant. So that was actually a reason why we lost a few also. The, there are multiple businesses that have parking allocated to this parking lot. And those are all identified on the site plan. So these spaces are all allocated currently, and we're maintaining those spaces for those businesses. The proposal requires up to 18 spaces, additional spaces, depending on if it's a retail space or restaurant space. Just to be clear, we are, at this point, only proposing a retail space. We were just showing the calculation for restaurant just to, as a, as an exercise to just demonstrate that we are going to be providing adequate parking for that also. So, so assuming 18 additional spaces, that requires a total amount of spaces of 47. We are providing 37 spaces-- We are providing 37 spaces on this site. And we are providing six additional spaces across the street. So just to orient you, this is the subject property. This is M&amp;T Bank. These spaces are going to be allocated towards the proposed use. So that's six spaces, leaving, I believe, four spaces that we are short of the required requirement. So the applicant will be paying a fee in lieu of parking spaces for four spaces. So, so just to be clear again, the parking spaces that are currently allocated towards these businesses will be remaining, and we won't be cutting into those spaces. We are about four, four spaces short of the requirement for restaurant use, two spaces short for the retail use. And the plan is for the applicant to pay for the four spaces in lieu of, in lieu of those stalls. I hope that answers that question.
All right.
Christian, can you also address, there was a question about impacts from the amount of traffic, the fact that this is a state road, and that the additional nine units are going to be within the level of service or, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. So just to put into perspective what's considered significant for a road like Route 9, when performing an environmental review for any project and looking at it from a traffic perspective, you would, a reviewing agency, a DOT, a lead agency under Seeker, they would be looking at, they would, they would be consider, considering a, an increase of 100, I believe it's, yeah, 100 units a day during peak hour as a significant increase. So that's definitely the threshold when we're talking about Seeker. So if you're going to be creating 100 additional trips per day during the peak hour, then that would consider, that would be considered significant. That would trigger additional studies and, you know, a full traffic analysis. This project will be generating probably less than 10 trips during the peak hour. There are nine, I believe, lodging units and then the retail space itself. So the traffic impacts are negligent. They, when compared to surrounding businesses and just the level of service for Route 9.
So Christian, I also spoke to a representative from the DOT, and pretty much what you said was accurate. Their only concern was, you know, you do have overnight accommodations, so that's really not going to be any impact to traffic. Retail store, not so much. If it turns into a restaurant and the turnover, that was the only concern. But with respect to your occupancy and what you're proposing, do you know if that's a big, not a big, but is that a more increase in an impact?
If it were, if it were to be a restaurant?
Yeah.
Given the size of the restaurant space, because I'm, I would need to double-check, but I'm pretty confident that it's, it would be based off of the size of the restaurant when you're calculating these peak hour
Right.
trips.
Okay.
Based on the space, that number would still be very small. But I can provide that to you guys, just so you have it on the record.
I mean, I don't know if you, I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, if you're definitely going to go the restaurant route, you know, you're going to probably want to support that you don't need a traffic study.
Just a reminder for the board, right now, the project is only proposed for retail and hotel. We added in the restaurant just for future discussion in case, you know, in a few years, when we get a tenant, they wanted to go that route. But they would have to come in for a special use permit and an additional review, if that were the case.
Yep. And I, can I just comment on about the parking across the street? Like, again, can you just explain that? Because if that's going to be a condition of the site plan approval, we would need to see an agreement.
It's within the same property owner, Craig. And we do have a provision that allows a 400-foot distance. You, you, are you saying that it's needed?
Is it under common ownership?
Yes.
Because if the common ownership was ever severed in the future, that has to be addressed.
So we, we've, we've discussed providing an easement. If the board's going to require that, that's something that we can do.
An easier way may be to just be add, add a note to the plan and then noting it and then a resolution of approval.
Depending on what you finally do, yeah, that would probably be, you know, a condition of the, of the site plan is a permanent easement. It would have to be.
Right. We would, we would want to link the easement to use of the building. So, you know, if someone knocks the building down, clearly, we wouldn't want the other parcel to be burdened by the parking.
Agreed, agreed. It would be for, for site plan conformance under the code. It would be linked to that.
Ryan, do we have more members of the public waiting in the wings?
Yes.
Is Sarah Rosenthal here?
I'm right here.
You're welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Thanks for having me. And so I wanted to speak to a couple of things. The, making sure that this was in front of the DOT was certainly one of them. And I've missed previous meetings about this building, so forgive me if this has already been addressed and I don't know. But I would like to request that there be a Seeker review, a long-form one, that would be made public, and that it would go for a public comment after the review was made. I'm pretty sure that Mirbo had to do that when they were doing their building, and I'd like to see that done here, just to really understand the environmental impact of adding another building to the downtown. The other thing I was concerned about is wondering if you guys are speaking with the county and what sort of process needs to happen there, because I do believe there's a bus stop that would be interfered with, with potentially with construction, that the county bus route goes right in front of that building. So I guess those are questions and requests. And then I just want to speak to my concern as a resident that my, these owners that are proposing to do this building, I have a really deep concern about the fact that they have another business in town that put up racist propaganda on the walls and defended that propaganda. And I'm concerned about that says for our community when we encourage.
Chairman, Chairman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request that we limit comments to the use. I mean, this is a site plan, so we're talking about a land use, not the user. And ownership changes, and in fact, this is in separate ownership than the restaurant that Ms. Rosenthal is talking about. And it's really not relevant to this particular application.
Right. We can't get personal about the owner. And the way the law works, these are separate corporations. They really are separate entities from one another and.
And I, then I would assume that the building across the street is also a separate corporation and a separate entity. So if we're going to consider each of their LLCs to be a separate building, a separate entity, then I don't know how we get to talk about parking across the street as a same entity.
Well, we're going to have to have a formal agreement between the two corporations, because we did not have a formal agreement when Howard Jacobs of the Amsterdam was renting spots and then the owner took, took, and we allowed him to take spots across the street as well as on this side of the street.
I guess I'm just saying, you don't get to have it both ways to say we're not the same organization and we are the same organization. So if you don't want me to speak to what the other LLCs are doing, then, then the building across the street is an entirely different thing, and those parking spots is a whole other thing. So I'll respect the, this, I just want it to be heard that I have some really deep concerns about the lack of community-mindedness of this organization and the owners and what they've done in Kingston and what they've done here in Rhinebeck. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ryan, do we have the next speaker ready?
Yes.
I just want to add while you're getting the next speaker. We did submit an environmental assessment form, and it has been available for review, you know, since the project's been submitted.
I believe, Victoria, that was the short form, not the long form.
Right. Well, the short is what's required for a project of this size.
But the long.
I'd like to request a long form if that, if that is possible and that the public be able to see it and comment on it.
That's been noted for the record for the minutes for the board.
I have a long form in my stack of stuff. So as far as I can tell, a long form was completed.
Then that'll have to be checked. Thank you, John Clark. Deirdre Burns, 32 Chestnut Street.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, again, thanks for the hearing and the opportunity to speak. So I just want to make a couple of general comments and then a couple that are more specific. I know, you know, it was good to learn from being here that a hotel is permitted in the village. But since Ms. Pollidero raised it that the Duchess County Chamber of Commerce says there's a need for hotel rooms in Northern Duchess County, I guess then I feel that I'm entitled to, to comment that as a resident of the village, given that we have already, I mean, if that's part of your argument, Ms. Pollidero, then, you know, my argument would be we have two large hotels already, one, of course, historic and one quite new, multiple BnBs, short-term rentals. We all know that, like, the business district has become a place catering mostly to tourists. And I just would, you know, the village master plan, to quote it, I actually looked at it, says to, one of the goals articulated is to allow, quote, "to allow economic opportunities that are consistent with the character of the village and meet the needs of its residents." Similarly, the town comprehensive plan addresses meeting the needs of residents. So I guess want to put that out there as something I'm deeply concerned about. And if it can't be addressed specifically with this, I would be interested in having the planning board consider what that might mean in the future in terms of like so many things catering to tourists and how is that consistent with our village master plan? It's, I wonder too, just more specifically to some of the issues that were raised here, I think the issue of parking and having clarity about the parking across the street. You know, some kind of agreement that you mentioned, I would support that. I wonder in terms of whether there would be a restaurant. I know right now the proposal is for retail, but if there can be any limitations placed on the permitting so that a restaurant maybe wouldn't be permitted without certain serious, you know, other examination particularly of the parking. I live and I can walk to town all the time or bike to town, but I know that it's such a huge issue for people who live in our village a little outskirts of town or certainly in the town to get into town and park. And I just am deeply concerned about another tourist thing, whereas like for those of us who live here, we want to live in a community that people like use the businesses. And that's where you run into people when, in fact, it's all safe to do that again. But I just, I just am really concerned, and I'm sure the planning board is too. So I just want to, you know, say on those issues, like the restaurant, is any way to limit the permitting right now? And then around the environmental issues, you know, I hope that that long-form Seeker is available online, so we can all look at it. And I guess I also just wondered, we've committed as a community, as a village, to be a climate-smart community, and I just don't know how new construction fits into that. If new construction, is it all green construction? What kinds of, you know, what, what kinds of energy is being used within this structure? And issues around recycling and composting and how that's going to be played out? As long as we're doing new construction and we're a climate-smart community, it feels like we should care about what this particular new construction, the impact environmentally on us being a climate-smart community. So those are my primary concerns. And I know it was considered really, you know, difficult to say, but I'll just say too that I'm very concerned about a neighbor, another, a landlord who permitted to have racist images on a restaurant and was only removed when there was public outcry beyond Rhinebeck. So I'll just say that doesn't sit well with me at all. I'd only like new construction and new development and developers to know that this is in a community where that is absolutely unacceptable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing, or a couple of things. First of all, going back.
I, I hope you realize I'm done. I just wanted to give me a second to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah. I'm sorry to cut off that speaker. I really am. I thought she was done. Just as your legal advisor, just wanted to point out that the short-form EAF is sufficient for unlisted actions like this. It, it, it's mandatory under type-one actions. This is an unlisted action. It is, it's optional to submit, you know, the long form. So that's something that is, is, you know, available, I guess, to the applicant if they have already filled it out, like they've just stated, you know, then, then it can be submitted.
We have submitted the long form, just for the record.
The long form was submitted, okay.
The full environmental assessment form.
Okay. And also, I just want to remind the board that zoning, you know, concerns the use and not the user. So, you know, any, any consideration outside of that is, is not for the board to consider.
Thank you. Thank you. Ryan, do we have the next speaker?
We do, Chair. But I'd just like to just, if we can all come back to the main focus of the applicant and what the, is being proposed, and to try to keep it centered on the discussion at hand. This is the first public hearing for this applicant and application. And I think it's not going to be decided upon tonight, and there will be opportunity for further meetings for each element to be addressed. So moving on, Debbie Duke, 25 Platt Avenue.
Hi, thank you for giving me a chance to speak tonight. I will, since I submitted my comments in writing, I won't go into detail. I won't read the whole thing. I do want to second the Vanessa and Deirdre who mentioned the comprehensive plan. And I want to add to what they said about maintaining local character and businesses that meet the needs of residents as well as tourists. I want to add to that, that the village master plan also calls for, and I'm quoting here, "a broad range of housing options for all present and future village residents." And Rhinebeck is already unaffordable for everybody who works in the school, for many people who work in the schools, who work in the restaurants, who work at the hospital. And catering to tourists doesn't do a single thing to ease the affordable housing problem. In fact, a lot of studies suggest that it does just the reverse. So I think we need to look back at our comprehensive plan and not just look at the site plan. We need to know that this is something that fits with the village goals. I also would like to note that the comprehensive plan is more than 25 years old. And maybe before we continue to go down the Disneyland tourism route, we ought to revisit our plan and sort of go on pause until we have a chance to think through what this community wants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Do we have the next speaker?
Jane Hoffman. Jane Hoffman.
Hi, I put my comments in writing, so don't feel that I need to speak right now, except for to. also support what other speakers before me have said, but my comments have been in writing, so, thank you.
They'll be included in the record.
Thank you.
Okay.
Kirsten Green. Kirsten Green.
Hi there, it's Kirsten and Leon Green, 249 Berger Road. Thank you for having a public meeting for this. Had a couple of questions. At the last meeting, you mentioned that six parking spots or something were going to come from the bank parking lot because the Amsterdam no longer needed them or no longer was using them. Can you explain what that means? Why doesn't the Amsterdam need those spots anymore?
There was a, sort of a verbal agreement with the previous owner of the property that the Amsterdam would have parking spots allocated in this lot and six across the street in the bank parking lot. But that agreement or easement or, or whatever was never really formalized in writing. And when the new applicant purchased the property, they decided they did not want to go along with that, and so the Amsterdam can no longer park in those spots.
So, this, so this raises, back, back to that issue of the agreement, which I know another speaker had raised. How, or maybe just for consideration, doesn't have to be answered right now, but how can the, the village ensure enforceability of a two-party agreement that it is not party to? You know, should, should the village actually be party to any agreement between these corporations regarding parking spaces being allocated so that any future questions arising, the village has standing to act on it? Just something for consideration.
I guess if Craig could make a comment on that, because it really, it really messed things up when the Amsterdam verbal agreement was no longer enforced when the new owner took place. And that the parking, it was a lot of confusion about that parking. I'd like to have this more formalized somehow.
Well, the board can absolutely make a condition of its site plan approval that the applicant give a declaration easement with the, the village party, you know, as a, to, to the agreement. I mean, it's a, it is going to be an agreement between two private owners, okay? But it will be a condition of the site plan and it's enforceable. If the site plan is violated, the, the, the village could enforce the site plan by revoking the site plan approvals and the, and the use, so.
I guess the challenge is that af- after the fact, once the building is built, revoking the site plan has obviously less impact. And also, if the bank were the party that chose to reneg on the agreement rather than the applicant, then, you know, there would be no standing to enforce anything effective.
The applicant owns both properties. It's under a common ownership.
We've already-
Under separate corporations, you just said, right?
We've already agreed to provide a written easement so that the spaces will be provided for the life of the project.
And it's going to be subject to attorney approval.
Okay, so it's actually going to be a deed, an easement on the, recorded on the deed, not just a commercial agreement between two-
It'll be a condition of, of the site plan approval that, that it be, that easements, you know, that are in recordable form and sufficient to the village attorney, Village Planning Board attorneys.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not an expert. I just wanted to raise that issue as a, as a consideration.
It's very good.
And as a, as a consideration, have they, have they considered a different look to the front of their building? I, I just find that the peak of the roof doesn't really feel in line with the Dutch colonialism as much as maybe a Mansford, Mansford roof. Just-
Or, you know, if optionality has been presented to the, to the board, you know, that we haven't seen and there's already been feedback on that that we're not aware of, but it just feels kind of out of character to the, the rest of the town. The brick, the brick part of it looks great. It's really just the roof line on the front of the building feels, feels, uh, maybe it's just the representation and image, I don't know.
Who, who's speaking right now?
Kirsten and Leon Green.
You've got, you've got the couple on the phone.
Oh, all right. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
And then one, one other thought was if, if the applicant is asking for variance and, am I correct that they are or they are not?
No.
No, okay.
Never mind.
All right, and then that's, that's it. Thank you so much.
Okay, now, Ryan, do you have any, any more speakers today?
That is the end of the list unless anyone present can send me a message saying they'd like to speak.
Well, we're not closing the public hearing today. We still have some outstanding issues which I want to talk about. So, we're going to leave this thing open, but we have another, Megan would like to speak.
I believe there's also, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Hi, guys. Am I on? I don't know if I'm working-
Yep, you're on.
Okay, good. I was, it was really confusing. Yeah, so I have La Tuabella on 19 East Market Street and I'm trying to move it to 20 West Market Street so it can be right next to my spa rain.
I think, Megan, you're ahead. We're still on the public hearing.
Oh, my God. I'm so sorry, guys. I thought I missed it.
We'll be getting to it a little bit.
I'm sorry.
We'll be right with you. Caroline Morton.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone who has presented and participated so far. I think what I, so many people have addressed my thoughts and concerns already. I think the one piece I want to comment on is that this, the village master plan that has been mentioned a couple of times seems to really take into consideration residents, the character, and this larger sort of feeling of what it is to be a village resident. And the civil engineer and attorney for the, for the owner here come at this from a really technical place. Technically, the law says this. Technically, the DOT says this. Technically, it's, you know, 100 people have to be moving at a particular hour for it to be considered an issue. And I think that, I'm sure it is, I'm not sure, but I would imagine that it was all correct or someone will be correcting them, but it's not what it, it, it doesn't at all represent what it means to live here every day. And to that end, we're talking about an existing restaurant that is losing parking spaces, which I'm just learning about now. It's not a secret agenda of mine. And there is, we're losing six spaces, so, so more of those people will need to be parking places. We are losing six spaces to this plan. And we are gaining a couple employees at least. I understand it's a keyless, et cetera, as well as eight or nine resident, renters, whatever you call them, to be there. So, I think there's a real imbalance here with the parking. And then to my first point, what that means to be a resident here and have to travel through that busy, busy area or heaven forbid, like, access a store near there. And I just leave that out there for the consideration of the board.
Okay. Thank you. Did anybody else sign up, Ryan?
No, I do not see any more requesting to speak, Chair.
We're going to hold this public hearing open, waiting for more information because now I'd like to get into the board's questions. The first question is Ty and Bond submitted a four-page document of questions they had about the project. And I don't know, I believe if he's still with us, Robert Sasser is here, and if he's received information from the applicant to clarify some of these questions.
I will say that we held off on submitting any new information in advance of the public hearing for two reasons. One, we didn't want there to be a situation where people spoke and said, "Well, I didn't know there was new information." And two, we wanted to be able to address public comments as part of the next submission. So, Christian can comment more, but we haven't not provided that comment response letter yet. We were waiting to hear what, what issues were raised during the public hearing tonight.
Okay, and I had a bunch of questions I can, the board may have some more of them. We had openings about the tree issue, which we just got a letter a few minutes ago before we started from the neighbor to the north agreeing to let you cut down the tree at your expense. And it lists a whole bunch of liability coverage, any property damage, and they will fix the fence at their expense. Did you get that letter, Victoria?
I did.
So, that was my one question that seems to be resolved.
That you can put that on the screen share so, so that the public can see that?
I don't know if we have that.
I'm, I'm using my home computer right now, so I cannot share it, but-
Okay. Part of the record, so.
It, it'll be part of the record. They, they agreed to, to, that the applicant remove that tree. Grinding down the stump, all debris will be removed. The fence gap in the rear, they will repair at their expense. Before any work proceeds, we want an insurance certificate that they're both named in, liability, property damage, and take care, there was another tree to take care that, that's not injured in the process. So, that will be part of the record. I believe we've cleared up that the fire department is okay with the project. Frontier is okay now with all of their issues about moving of the visitor center, about the overhang of the, on the building. Is that all clear now?
We still have, we're still negotiating the specifics of the license agreement. They want insurance and indemnification as far as the overhang. But the tourism shed and the transformer are no issue. The transformer serves their property anyways.
The transformer is Central Hudson. Central Hudson agreed to the moving of the transformer.
Christian has been in conversations with Central Hudson and they're working through that. We would request at some point that that be a condition of approval, just because we're, you know, there's a lot of red tape getting through to Central Hudson.
And, and if I could just interrupt, Central Hudson, I've had multiple conversations with them. They, at this point, told me that they would prefer to wait till there was an approval from the planning board to schedule the site visit and get deeper into it. My feeling is that they're worried about spending any resources in the event that this was, didn't move forward. So, I would echo what Victoria just requested as, if, if this could be a condition of approval. They've indicated that at this point, there's no indication that they would not be able to relocate that transformer at this point. So, but they, they have told me at, at least once that they may be waiting until there's a, a formal approval from the municipality before it gets set into motion.
And DOT has been contacted. You know, they, they need to go over the entrance, the exit. It needs to be curbing, of course. There is no curb now. I myself, you know, pull up halfway up onto the sidewalk when I run into the post office. There needs to be a, you know, definitive curve. And I know with other projects, they are concerned about plantings that could block, you know, leaving the property on the north side, you know, looking south, see if cars are coming, they might have a problem with some of the trees. I know they had it down at the farm, the farm property as well. They commented about trees blocking the view as people were coming out onto the. So, we have a bunch of issues, including the village engineer's comments. So, we have to keep going with the public hearing and keep going with the site plan review. We can't do much else tonight. When do you think more of this stuff would be in play that would be worth coming back? We meet in two weeks. The, the meeting after that is on election day. We always meet on election day. I don't think I want to have a public hearing on election day. Certainly, a lot of the public will be distracted with what's going on that night, so we probably couldn't get back till November 17th. Unless you'll be ready in two weeks. I don't know if you're going to have all those approvals in two weeks.
I've, I've been in touch with the DOT. The latest, I spoke to them today. Apparently, this application has been shuffled around to a few different people in their office. I guess that they are experiencing a high volume of applications. So, they told me that they were hoping to get us responses either later this week or latest next week, early next week. So-
Go ahead. I need to see your responses to the four pages from Ty and Bond.
Right, exactly. And we, we are preparing those responses. The majority of those comments, we've already addressed. To be honest, a lot of those were, were things that maybe, maybe they, they were more like punchless items that, I mean, we would have outlined, like, when we first look at a project. And most, the majority of those comments, we've actually already addressed, but we'll, we'll have a line-by-line item response to each one of those comments and get that to you. That's, that's not a problem. We don't really take any issue with any of the comments that they have.
We either have to meet again in two weeks on this issue and keep the public hearing open, or I don't want to do it on election night, so we have to do it, I think, was it 17th or something of November?
I think November, November 17th would be my preference, just to give us a little more time to get the responses together, maybe hear back from DOT.
Agreed. We're going to have to, you're going to be drafting the seeker and, and site plan, right, Victoria?
I'm going to be-
Is that, is, are you going to be drafting seeker resolution?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yes, I will get all those to you.
All right, so we will hold over the public hearing and continue this discussion on November 17th. And I don't know what advertising we have to do. It'll be, it'll be published in the agenda that we're going to continue this discussion on the 17th.
I would just like to add just a quick statement about living in the village of Rhinebeck. And, you know, part of the reason why we get to have such a special village with all these stores and restaurants is because tourists come to the area. And so, I, I know that sometimes it feels like a burden, but we don't get the benefit of, of living in such a lovely place without all of that extra infusion of, of people and money. I mean, without tourists, there's no way that our village could support all of, all of these businesses, so I just wanted to make that statement.
David, can I say something as well?
Sure.
There's been a lot of talk about the comprehensive plan. I actually wrote the comprehensive plan back in the early 90s when I worked for the county. And so, I went back and looked at it again, and on page 94 and the map thereafter, it talks about redevelopment options in the village center, and this particular property was identified on the village center map as a redevelopment opportunity where you could take a, a parking lot that fronts on, on the main streets in the commercial area and put in a new infill building. So, it was identified as the right place to fill in a hole in the streetscape.
Oh, but, I mean, a, a development opportunity, but it doesn't have to be for unaffordable. I mean, that's a stretch. I'm sorry.
As I'm saying, it's a permitted use and the comprehensive plan locates this individual property for redevelopment, so at least it's consistent with the comprehensive plan in that sense.
But that, again, is-
That doesn't mean it's, John, that doesn't mean it's consistent with-
What, what happened? Well, look, the, if people have issues with the, with the master plan, which was written, I believe it was 1993, it's over 25 years old, and that should be addressed to the village board if the public feels it's time to get a committee together and look at 2020 and see where the village is today and revise the master plan, but that's not something which we can address today. Today, the village code allows for a lodging facility to be in the business district, and it's not legal. And Craig would, you know, Craig would say, you know, we, we have no right to say you cannot build a lodging facility in the village business district when it is allowed. If somebody purchased the barbecue place, which has an in-and-out, and it was McDonald's or Burger King, and they said, "We're going to have a, you know, a, a takeout window in the back and you can drive in and out, put a big hot hamburger on the sign." We can't say, "Oh, we don't want chain restaurants in the village of Rhinebeck." It's a business. If someone wants to open a business, this is all legal, and we have drive-throughs at several banks and gas stations in the village, so we have to go by the code. We can only go by the code. And the code allows lodging facilities, unfortunately, and you cannot get personally involved in who owns it. That's a separate issue as well. It has to be addressed in other venues than the planning board. You know, this, you know, our job is parking and landscape and, and traffic- and traffic and other issues like that, that makes it fit into the village if we're gonna, if we're gonna go ahead and build something like this. So we will, we will address this issue again. We'll open it up to the public again. We'll go over the changes or modifications or approvals that have come in in the month that will pass between now and then. And we can allow the public to comment again on the hotel. So I appreciate everybody sending in letters and everybody coming to the meeting and making comments. And we will continue on the 17th of November and leave the public hearing open. Okay, everybody?
And we'll provide responses to all those outstanding issues for that meeting.
Yeah, and if you have any, anybody has any additional letters or comments that they want to write, you know, send them to Ryan and we will add them to the to the package of the site plan approval. And I appreciate people taking the time to write down their comments and send them in. Okay. We finish with this topic for tonight. Thank you, everybody. We're now going to move on.
Thank you very much.
Now we can have Megan.
Well, wait a minute, Mr. Chairman, hold on.
Yes.
We just gotta, if you're gonna defer action on this application, you have to now, you know, provide for an adjournment date for, you know, to keep the public hearing open.
Yeah, we said the 17th of November.
Okay, and.
I think you would need a motion, David. I think a motion would be appropriate at this time.
If you want, refer to that email that I sent you with a proposed, you know, motion, because it was subject to the.
Okay.
Engineers' comment.
Have your email. I move at the planning board defer action on site plan application for 6376 Mill Street, the hub, Village Center Project, subject to the following. Respond to preliminary site plan comments A to J. Join comments and responses to be reviewed by the village planning department as professional consultants as to adequacy and completeness as set forth in the village engineer Rob Sasse's review, letter dated September 15, 2020. And that's the motion. We'll hold this over until the 17th of November. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we need a verbal. Michael Gee.
Yeah, aye.
Mary Quinn. You have to turn your mic, Mary. Raise your hand at least.
All right, aye.
James Davidson.
Aye.
And John Clark.
Aye.
And David Miller, aye. Okay, the motion passes for the record. Thank you, Chris. Craig?
I've been called worse.
And James Davidson, thank you for coming.
Victoria wanted to talk. Victoria, you're muted. You're muted.
Okay, thank you. I was stuck in, I couldn't unmute myself. I just wanted to make sure Mr. Miller's statement was going in and out, and I don't know if it was my internet, that there was a motion to continue the hearing until November 17.
Yes, I can chime in on that, Victoria. David Miller made the motion, Michael Gee seconded it. All those voted aye in favor, five to zero by roll call vote for November 17th continuation of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Hey, we're gonna move on now. It's time for Megan. To Bella.
Hi, guys.
For a sign to move Latuabella to 18 West Market Street. Now, we're going to have a special use permit is required for this project. So we're gonna have to have a public hearing in two weeks. It's a retail services and we saw the sign and we had a question.
David, a chair. At this time, they've changed their sign plan. So right now, they're just here for the special use permit. And they will be returning on October 20th with a sign proposal.
Okay, so this is just going to be for the.
For the sign, it is for both places, just because I want, since the salon will be in the same building as the spa, I kind of wanted it to look better, the building, like make the signs look like similar, you know, the seams on the building. It'll just look better for the building. So that's kind of why I wanted to change the signs.
There was a picture in your brochure that showed people sitting at a bar drinking.
Drinking?
Huh?
No, it's called the beauty bar. So they're out there celebrating. Maybe we do weddings, so.
Is that, John Fenton, does that have anything to do with the state liquor authority? People are drinking, or is that?
Oh, we actually legally can't serve, we, back in the day, we used to serve champagne with your appointment. Not charge them, just like kind of give it to them like as in celebrating, like your, like the bride and stuff. But we actually, unfortunately, we can't even do that anymore because of COVID. We can't even give water bottles, actually. So it's kind of sad. Yeah.
So David, I believe if there was a change of money for liquor, then a license would be required.
Yeah, because I, I'm not familiar with the details. I know the state liquor authority is more lenient with wine and beer than they are with hot liquor. But I know that the historical society had a fundraiser and it, you paid for the fundraiser and then you got a couple of glasses of wine with your meal. And we got like a three-hour liquor license to cover ourselves. Even though we were not selling the wine, it was part of the package. And if you come to Latuabella and it's a package that you're buying and you get a glass of wine with it, I'm not sure. So. Yeah, I mean, we need to make sure that this doesn't, you know, violate any liquor authority rules.
So Megan, if your venue expanded and included in your package was the sale of alcohol, you gotta be careful because I know that, yeah, so the state would require a license. And not only that, it still also would need village board approval.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I just did it kind of like tea, like, you know, just, yeah.
Because if you gave, the reason why our treasurer told us we had to do that, because if you had a couple of glasses of wine or champagne and then drove off and got into an accident, they could sue you for allowing them to drink, you know, without a license. So you have to protect yourself as well.
Yes, yeah, I totally understand.
So we're just gonna have the public hearing on the special permit for a beauty salon. Unfortunately, it's a beauty salon to a beauty salon, but you're moving to a different location. And the code, you know, requires a special permit.
Yeah, it was in the Oliver Keita space. And I know they think they did retail and now we're gonna do services, so.
Right.
So is the service business, will they need more parking?
Not, I mean, we've been there for nine years, the same employees, the same everything. We're just moving it just so it's close. Just so I don't have to walk back and forth to see everybody. It's just, I just like that it's all in one building and it's like more convenient for like both of the places. But it's the same parking that we have now that we've had.
Yeah, Mary, Mary, the service in the retail business, calculations are the same.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
And we already approved a bridal salon, I think, for your current location.
Yeah, Addy.
Okay, so Ryan will take care of the circulation of the public hearing notice for two weeks from tonight. And if you have your sign that night, we can complete your whole package that evening.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Good. So we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is continued business of Henry Stout, 139 Montgomery Street. Now, this is a tricky project because the, is he here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, good, because the village town line runs through the center of the building. And the town has approved their half of the building and the associated things. It had to be 100 feet from the kill and not anywhere near the wetlands and so on. It's a huge piece of land, but a very small billable possibility, I mean, buildable possibility for that property. So we have to look at that. And tonight, we have to see the plans next time, but tonight tonight, what we're addressing is the variance request for the property. And the variance request is is only because the property is 148 feet from the road. And we originally thought it was going to be a side yard variance with the former electric plant. But it was a mistake and it said three feet 11 inches and it's 13 feet 11 inches. So that variance is not needed. We want to look at the, at the building later. We want to look at this U-shaped driveway and talk about driving and parking and stuff, you know, at a later date. But tonight, we're just really here to talk about the emotion to make a positive or negative recommendation on this 148 feet. Now, my only question was, where is the front of this house? What did you measure 148 feet from?
Well, you can see if you're looking at the sketch there, you follow the driveway in. And then if you got a look up to the left, which would be the north, you see a box there that says 149 feet. Right, there's a box that, that side is.
That corner.
That's the official front of the house. And I believe we actually designed that. I don't know if you all remember, but we've been in process here for two years. We started with you in the village. You referred us back to the town and now we're back to the village. When we were with the village, we redesigned the house to have the front facing front door of the house on that side that basically faces, yeah, right there, faces Montgomery Street. So that is the official front of the house right there.
Okay, so that's 149 feet. Okay, now, the issue for us, of course, while you have to go for this variance, the planning board has a discretion to look at adjacent properties and say, well, you know, this is it's within the bounds of other properties on either side of it or across the street that seem to have similar deep setbacks. The problem is we cannot look at properties to the left of the building because they're in the town. So we're not allowed to make a comparison to the town. And the electric plant is right on the road. So that, that's not a good comparison at all. So we have to go for this variance to the zoning board of appeals. Does anybody on the board have any comments about this?
I walked the property with Henry last year, I think it was. And it just made sense to have the house there. There really wasn't any other way to do it. You know, with the wetlands and all. And the way the curve is on the road, I don't think it would be obtrusive or unsightly to have the house back from the the plant next door at all.
Well, certainly wouldn't disturb the power plant people because they're right on the road. And Henry would be way, way back from them up the hill and wouldn't, it wouldn't be seen at all from their property because they're doing a lot of work there landscaping. They put a whole bunch of trees in the other day. So we certainly want to talk about the house and the driveway and the U-shaped, you know, entry to two entrances and stuff, but that's for, for the site plan meeting. Should the zoning board of appeals grant you the 140, what is it, 140? 123 feet relief from the 25-foot maximum setback. So does anybody have any comments before?
I walked the property last year too, and I agree with Mary. It, I think it's, it's fine. And really, the only spot where you can do it, the only thing that I really like to see is a piece of paper plan, this tiny little, the million lines. I'm gonna need hard copy.
One question about that, guys. Do you, and if so, how many, what I have printed 11 by 17. They're waiting for me at Staples. I'm wondering how many full-size blueprint copies you guys would, would like, and I'll be happy to produce them.
I think 11 by 17 would be good. I don't know if we need full blueprint.
That would be fine.
Yeah, just eight and a half by 11 is really hard to see. The house, the look. House and everything. We could talk about the driveway and the two entrances. One, Mr. Fenton, to, you know, chime in on that. But today, all we need to do, because if we doesn't get the variance, then, you know, the whole thing is moot, so.
Motion to have a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for the variance. Findings that because of the configuration of the lot, the 100-foot setback of the wetlands, the only reasonable position of the septic field. This is a appropriate place for the house to be built.
We have a second.
I'll second that, but I think it's two variances, isn't it?
No, it's just the one.
Oh, it's just one?
Yeah, guys, there was, there was just a misread. It's hard to see the one in front of the three. But there was just a misunderstanding. It appeared that the corner, the southernmost corner of the house was only three feet from the southernmost property line. But that's absolutely not the case. I would never design a site like that. It's a 13-foot gap there, plenty of room to bring a vehicle through, or there's, there's grass area in back of the house. We need to be able to get a tractor through there for mowing or what have you. So we have, we have basically 12, we have 14 feet, because it's 13 feet 11 and a quarter inches. He's circling it right there. If you, if you look to the left of the three, it's kind of hard to see. I sent it detail today. And we got, we got confirmation from the engineer, but that's 13, not three feet in that area.
It's just a very difficult piece of land. It's like seven acres and you have maybe half an acre you can build on. So, you know, it's a difficult design.
Yeah, it's a situation where form follows function. We, we looked at, we allowed the site to kind of dictate the placement of both the septic, the house, the driveway. We're utilizing the existing paved curb cut, trying to really work with what's there and design into it. And then from there, build forward rather than, you know, the other way. So that's, it really is. And also then, all of that in consultation with DEC and, you know, Board of Health, and so many different agencies along the way. This is kind of where it landed. And I agree with the board that, you know, I really do think that it's a lovely spot for a house. It's, it will not be obtrusive, and I think it'll be an asset to the community.
We need a roll call vote. Michael Gee?
I vote aye.
James Davidson?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
Mary Quinn?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. All right, so the, our next meeting is before the ZBA. They meet two days after us, so we'll have to come back on election day. Unless you're otherwise occupied, then we could do it on the 17th. But tentatively, it would be election day when you come back to site plan approval, subject to the ZBA approving this. Okay?
Works for me. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. So the last thing on the agenda is a discussion. We desperately need to hire someone to take minutes for us to make sure the minutes are accurate. And we have an application from Christine Amy, which all of you have a copy of. And I'd like to have the feel of the board about requesting that the village board hire her as our official minute taker. Have you all seen the resume?
Doesn't Christine work in the village office too?
No, that's, that's, no, that's, you're thinking of some, somebody else, Mary.
Chrissy Amy, right?
No, that's Chrissy Denu.
Denu, okay, all right.
Two, two different people.
All right, wrong, wrong Chrissy.
So it's fine with me. We could make a motion if you want. Because we need to get somebody on board quickly.
She sounds well-qualified. I'm impressed by the resume. She sounds well-qualified. Uh, I'm impressed by the resume. The only question is, does she have time? She seems to be involved in so many things. And would the EMS, um, work be in conflict if there was an emergency call?
Well, I think that what we, we can do with, Larissa was doing it, where Ri-, uh, Ryan's recording these, which means that, you know, okay, you know, Sunday night at midnight, if she had an hour or two to watch this meeting, she could do it and type up the minutes from watching it live rather than physically being here. One, another great advantage of, uh, of Zoom. I'm also quite pleased with, uh, our first attempt at a public hearing. Uh, went quite well with Zoom.
Thanks, Ryan.
So, uh, every, everybody agrees we would make a, you wanna have a formal vote, a motion? All right, I'll make a motion to recommend to the village board that we hire Christine Ime as our, uh, official minute taker. That's a title. All those in favor?
I.
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 Okay, well, we'll forward that. You can, John, John Fenton can tell, uh, the mayor tomorrow that we're in, uh, we're in agreement on hiring her. Are there any other items for discussion?
Um, I, I, I brought it up with, uh, John today. Back in the spring, Chris Chestney, dug the back of his property, uh, out and, um, he just dug it out and made it level with his parking lot and he changed his traffic pattern to come in. And then about a month or so ago, he had a, uh, uh, pavement company in there. They sealed it and they striped. And in the last couple of weeks, he basically is, has put nine, um, parking spaces in which the cars are facing Hollenbeck's building. So if you live at Ten Oak Street, you got headlights shining right into your, you know, living room. And I mean, actually, the, the, the two closest to, uh, Oak Street, they're shining at my house. So I think, you know, that's a, a change of the site plan. I don't have a problem with it except for, you know, our precedent is that, you know, um, commercial spaces have to be, um, put up screening for adjacent residential. I don't know if he made a, I don't know if he made a, an agreement with, uh, Mirabeau, but the last two weekends, I mean, there's been seven, eight, nine cars and he doesn't have funerals. So there's something going on with that parking there and, you know, and we need more parking, but it, you don't wanna, you don't wanna live in, in the houses and have people's headlights shining in there. So I think we have to bring them in.
Yeah, I mean, uh, what I'll do, Mike, is we'll, we'll send him a letter, um, due to his, um, change in his parking. Um, potentially, it could be a negative impact to the neighbors, uh, with the headlights and what have you. So there'll be screening involved and. So we'll get him, we'll get him back on, uh, we'll send the letter out to him this week and, uh, see if we can get some correspondence going back and forth. Get him, get him to the next meeting.
So, the, the, one thing I wanna comment does, everyone's got a copy of the correspondence for the Brogan Center. The petition signed by all the neighbors, you know, knock it down, we don't need it. We just have to make it clear to everybody, if you speak to anybody, nothing is happening with the Brogan Center. We've had a bunch of discussions with a bunch of different people, but not a single person has come in with either a demolition permit or a site plan approval. So as far as I am concerned, nothing is yet happening. And until somebody comes forth, um, with a proposal, we have nothing to talk about. And I wish everybody would reassure everybody that we're not doing anything with the Brogan Center. It's, you know, it's up for sale. And period. And that's all. I'd also like to welcome Lydia. I see she's up here, our newest board member and our rep who's replacing Paul Korzak on the board and, um, is, uh, now our rep. And I'm glad that she tuned in to watch us, if she's still out there.
I'm, I'm here.
There you are.
Yep, hi.
Oh, we can see what you look like. Hello.
Um, it's nice to meet all of you. And, um, what a fascinating meeting, so.
It's a, this, this is a tricky one and people are very emotional about it. And, uh, it, it's allowed. You know, and if they wanna change the master plan, then it's twenty-six, twenty-seven years old or something. Write a new master plan, change the village's code. In the meantime, the law today is lodging facilities are allowed.
Yeah, it's an interesting bouncing act. Um, so, yeah, good food for, good food for thought for the next village meeting.
And, uh, I'm, I'm giving a talk on November twentieth on Zoom to the Historical Society on the, uh, lodging, lodging and boarding houses of Rhinebeck a hundred, hundred twenty years ago. It has always been a destination for city folk. And I'm going to show everybody that dozens of places people stayed uh, and what life was like in Rhinebeck in the nineteen twenties or teens.
Did it used to have more hotel rooms than it does now?
Um, if you count up all the, the lodging facilities that were out there, I think there were a lot more places to stay a hundred years ago than there are today. The Beakman Arms was there, you gotta count that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Miraboo added a few rooms. This could add nine. There's a few at the, uh, Village Inn down the block. But, uh, yeah, I think there are a lot more places to stay than there are now.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's always been a destination. People come up here. John?
When was that again? You're gonna give this talk?
Uh, November twentieth. Now, we're, because it's on Zoom, Mike Fraser and I have a lot of difficulty figuring out. If we open it up to the world, we always invite everybody to come to the library, but the library is closed. So we're doing it on Zoom. Um, and we're inviting members to come and watch it and ask questions. And then I'm, I'm capturing it like Ryan's capturing this video and I'm putting it up on our, on our YouTube channel. So I think twenty-five or thirty people came to the last presentation, Forgotten Hamlets, uh, Duchess, Northern Duchess County, which was a fabulous talk. And, uh, twenty-five people participated like this, members. And then two hundred and seventy have seen it so far. So, um,
Wow.
You don't exactly have, you can't, it's a member-only thing because we're, we only can really offer it to members right now.
And this is the Rhinebeck Historical Society, right, Dave?
Yes.
Wow. Well, that should be a fascinating meeting, sort of timely.
It's very timely. And I, I will tell everybody, once I post the video a few days later, I will, um, let everybody know where it is and invite people to watch it. And we've had like, you know, we have seventy videos of our programs over the last dozen years. I've had forty thousand views of the video. So we're doing, the most popular video is the history of Lionel trains. It has nothing to do with Rhinebeck. That's seventy-five hundred views. And scandals of, of the, uh, Golden Age or whatever, um, given by the educator at Mills Mansion. And that has tw- three thousand views. People love scandal.
Well, everybody loves gossip.
Loves gossip.
So it's lovely to meet all of you. And if you need anything from me or if you just wanna reach out, um, I, I finally, I have my new, um, my new Rhinebeck email address. And so just reach out. I'm happy to have coffee or go for a walk or talk to any of you about any of the concerns or excitement or really anything that you're thinking about as it relates to the planning board and the village.
Well, we, we have an opening on the planning board. I spoke to the mayor about it. James Davidson has been a long-term, often former member of the planning board who agreed to be called in in emergencies and we haven't called him in five or six years. But, uh, I, I don't know if their resume's in or whatever, but, um, we need to get that done.
Yeah.
We have, I was worried about a two-two tie, but thank goodness, uh, James Davidson volunteered to, uh, to represent us until we get this issue solved. So.
I think we're closing, I think we're closing the application process for that on the nineteenth. Um, and so if any of you can, we're trying to get as many applicants as possible, just to get a nice group. Um, and so if you wanna beat the bushes in your, in your networks, feel free.
Okay, and, uh, I don't know what, I know the village board would interview. When I was hired, I interviewed by the village board. And then I was interviewed by the planning board to see how I would, you know, fit in with the group and stuff. So I don't know what your process is going to be, but, um, make it so, as Captain Picard used to say.
On it, on it. It's one of the, it's one of the most important, um, boards in the, in the village. And so we're absolutely, this is top priority for us.
Okay, welcome to the village board.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm excited. I'm very excited. And thank you for all of the work that you do.
Thank you. And, uh, anybody have any other questions? If not, an intended motion to close the meeting?
I got a question for John.
Okay.
Is the water problem on Garden Street fixed?
Yes, it's at four o'clock today.
Okay.
Didn't get as far as my house, thank goodness.
It was an interesting one, but, um, I tell you what, the, uh, we got a lot of talent in the village. Um, and so I've been utilizing the highway guys to help out the water guys and wastewater helps out the water and highway. So it's really, you know, this was the first time that we actually united all the village departments and really tackled, um, a, a really complicated problem. And we probably saved the village, you know, thousands of dollars, uh, doing it just in-house. So it worked out really great.
Always like, when, when something's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. We just finished the multimillion-dollar water project and this was not part of it. Boom, that's where the bane breaks.
Ironically, while we were repairing that leak, parallel to Garden Street was Route Nine. And the DOT was doing their final walkthrough. It was, it was just weird timing. But we're all good.
Good.
All right, well, we'll see you, all of you in two weeks. We'll see what our, uh, oh, yes, we have the special permit for the, uh.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second, I'll second it. All those in favor?
I.
Good night.
Thank you, Jim.